We got our four o'clock after the meeting, it's just time I'll turn it over to-
Mayor, Mayor, I've got a comment that I may please. We talked about last time pay raise for employees and it was talked about a bonus which I don't think is adequate due to the fact that cost of living raise, if employers have not received the cost of living raise from that thing in several years, I'd like to make a motion to give all employers with exception of department heads, city manager, and city attorney, a three percent pay raise effective in July. Department heads do an extra job if they are well compensated, it is important that we recognize the work our rank and file employees do on a daily basis. The city manager, the city attorney have just recently been hired, and they too are well compensated, so they should also be exempt from the raise. The six hundred thousand the manager wants to use for the bonus can be applied to the raises as well as remaining the money could come part of from the city's managers discretionary fund, I'd like to make this a motion.
All right, have a motion, go on, second.
I'm on second, Ben.
Do I have a discussion?
Discussion, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've got a motion, second. I would like to see us go ahead and do a cost of living raise as well, but not just for certain employees, I'd like for us to do it for us to, I'd like to see us do, and I think we were told that the six hundred thousand dollars would probably cover about one and a half percent of salaries right now, is that what, is that correct, Larry? The six hundred thousand dollars that you suggested in form of a bonus, could that cover about one and a half percent of salaries?
I believe, I believe in general fund, just speaking from memory, we had actually, with all due respect, had proposed this be carried over to March 7th, taking provide the board with numbers, but-
Well, that, that's okay.
But I think one percent equates to, in the general fund side, one percent equates to about two, two twenty-five, twenty-two, five thousand, so around six fifty, six seventy-
What I was, what I was hoping that we would do there was go ahead and do a one and a half percent of our cost of living for fiscal year that we're currently in, and make that retroactive back to July 1, and give the employees what was owed to them back to July 1, to take care of that one and a half percent. And then for the remainder of your adjusted salary so that they would have the one and a half percent, and so they would have the one and a half percent going into next year's budget as well. So in other words, rather than giving them, wait until July, to give them three percent, I'd like for us to go ahead and do a one percent, oh, one and a half percent for this year, and then continue that one and a half percent until going into the next fiscal year.
My thinking on that was that, you know, you still have inflation, employees and families and all, they have, their budgets increase every year, and the fact that we haven't really looked at them hard for some time, so that's the reason, and that's the reason I'll stick to that, that motion.
And again, Mayor, I don't have a problem with adjusting the doing a cost of living, since I have not seen any other budget numbers at this time, and I don't, and I don't know what the, that a three percent of cost of living increase would do to our budget.
I think it's going to run about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, and if you take the six hundred and part of discretionary fund, pretty well would, would cover that. And secondly, that would give staff till July 1 to work in to the coming budget year.
Well, the one thing that I agree with is rank and file employees getting raised, and I think that's important for the rank and file to get a raise, and I agree that our department heads are very well compensated, as is our city manager, city attorney that we just hired, and also our assistant city manager. So I am for the rank and file employees getting raised, and I think three percent is fair.
Okay. But you're talking about one and a half percent.
Yes.
That one and a half was for-
One and a half would be retroactive back to July, what the current budget year we're in, so they would get, they would get back to July 1 up until today's date, and then from this day forward, they would get the remainder of that one and a half percent cost of living on their paycheck each pay period, and then going into July 1 of this coming year, the next fiscal year, they would get another, well, that one and a half percent would, would be constant, and if we see what we can afford to do more, then we would do more. But, but again, I think that the one and a half percent would, would take, you know, would take care of everybody and not just, and I know that our supervisors are well paid, but the city manager keeps alluding to the fact that we are not adequately compensated in our key personnel, and that he's afraid he's going to lose key personnel if we don't figure out a way to give them additional compensation. And that's, that's the gist of what I have been getting from you.
Question. Billy, you said one, one and a half, which they would get now, and if you retroactive, so that's immediately-
They would get, they would, they would immediately see a one and a half percent of cost of living going back to July 1, and that would be in the form of retroactive pay. Then for the rest of this year, their paychecks would reflect a one and a half percent quota for the fiscal year that we're in. And, and then going into next fiscal year, if the city manager sees where we can rate, we raise that from one and a half up to three percent, I don't have a problem with that. But I just personally think that it needs to, that we need to treat all of our employees the same.
How would the council look at it, a straight one and a half percent? I'm talking about for-
A motion on the floor.
I don't have, but I, I could, right now I can talk too. We, we have a discussion, that's my question. Any other discussion?
I, I would only have this comment as well. Apparently from what I'm hearing from Billy is that he wants to make this retroactive with that one and a half, and that number back to July 1 of this past year, and really an unknown number about where we may be going on July 1, that could be one and a half or more.
Depending on what the city manager determines, that the budget could support.
And I do agree with, with the motion, but I, I personally think that this raise should be held to the people that Lynn has described, and not all employees. And so, that's, and the three percent number is, is, you know, in my opinion, is a, is a significant raise, and, and an adequate one.
Okay. Anyone else? Excuse me. Nothing all in favor of, see, we've got two motions.
No, 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 there's one motion, I did not make a motion, but mine was just comments.
You have a comment, oh yeah, you are. Okay, I have a motion to do the three percent for employees, for the employees, and-
For the, for the purpose of the motion, Mayor, and I'm sure that this has been discussed with the city manager, could you identify those key personnel that would not be receiving-
I was, I'm surprised by the motion, but what I heard is the motion was the three percent quota for all but basically department heads involved.
And how many, how many people would, would we be talking about?
Roughly, it's one hour, we see, twelve to fifteen.
Well, maybe, okay, I have a motion. Wait, we can come back and address some of that, maybe, maybe in July, if that's what it is. All right, so I have a motion, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. Okay, did you get that? All right, I'm one, where on the proposed six dollars of bonus, we passed that, now we've passed that for one, so we'll go into out of two discussions of the goal.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. I've got a couple slides, an overview of today's presentations, and a series I hope will follow on March 17th and April 7th. You might, you might ask, why do these presentation topics matter? I've asked our staff to focus on that same question while they were formulating their narratives. There are two types of presentations that I've asked to organize for you, I'm categorizing them as non-SWAT and SWAT. Now, non-SWAT, basically are themes focusing on the challenges across departments or across the community. The SWAT assessments are strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats assessments with, are championing, giving you more of a departmental perspective, which I asked staff to use as a template to organize those narratives. But why should the presentations matter? My perspective is, as a proposed budget sets forth, spent, a spending plan, which is the fuel needed to advance your collective goals and guidance, the spending plan will allocate resources enabling our staff to deliver those policies and programs at a level of quality that you have decidedly agreed upon. The spending plan that eventually is designed exhibits your policy in dollars and cents, and should propel community closer to the ideals we collectively hold. Obviously, dollars fund positions, functions, programs, initiatives, and incentives. Perhaps we can agree that there are many items of importance that will be counted as vitally important when measures or resources are attached. To do that effectively, a common understanding organization, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats should exist, thus I place significant importance on this communication for the board and for our upcoming forms in April to the community. This slide highlights the presentations for this afternoon, on 17th and April 7th. We may not complete the entire list identified for today, it's granted, it's a lot. Today's lead presentation includes Tanya, backing her up Ryan, providing insights on facility usage, following them, repeat presenting a branding initiative that may reshape our public identity across the region. After those are completed, and if time permits, I've asked staff to give strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat presentations, or SWAT for short. I've asked the staff to limit their narratives to approximately ten minutes. We hope you do ask questions, questions will obviously extend to any of our presentations. So at this time, I'd like to invite Tanya to provide you insights on facility usage.
Good afternoon, nothing like being first. What I've been asked to do is to provide you with some information on the recreation facilities that are operated through the Recreation Division, and what we're going to look at is facility uses trends and the daily usage at our facilities for fiscal years 2012 through 2014. And then I'm going to concentrate on fiscal year 2014 as far as the programs. What I think that this report will demonstrate is that overall, we have seen increases in our daily usage. Underutilization exists in some program areas, the need to assess and prioritize community needs does exist, and the potential need to reallocate funds to better serve citizens and increase program usage. What I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the charts that you see on the slide because they will be repeated for each recreation center. The chart on the left demonstrates the daily average usage at the recreation center, and then the pie chart basically demonstrates what folks are doing once they get to that facility. So that is our program usage at this facility. Dickerson Center, the largest program usage area, is in our after-school and day camp programs. The second largest usage area is the open gym, and open gym is simply when the gym is open for free club basketball. Annual operating cost of this facility is ninety-six thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars. We do have several programs at this facility that does generate revenue that helps to offset that operating cost, and those are the after-school, summer day camp programs, cheer and self-defense programs, and then the daily fees that are charged for ages sixteen and up for the gym and the weight room. Underutilized program times, we do have seen a decrease in the morning usage at this facility on weekdays, some of that can be attributed to the opening of the aquatics and fitness center. So we could possibly reduce some of the morning hours, Mondays and Tuesdays seem to be the least utilized days, and we could realize some potential savings by doing that.
Out of the ninety-six, excuse me, out of ninety-six thousand dollars, that's the annual budget, what the program brings in?
About fifty-four thousand dollars.
So we're, we're just under fifty thousand costs.
This is, this is the cost after you take out what we got to revenue, this is our operating cost, this is after, this is total operating cost, and it takes into consideration all the revenue that are generated there.
I didn't mean to jump ahead on you there.
No, that's fine. Ellenford Sherrill Senior Center, this is our facility, serves our participants that are fifty-five years and older. No surprise that the fitness programs see the largest usage at this facility. We have a annual operating cost of two hundred fifteen thousand dollars, two hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred and six dollars. It is a membership facility, however, city residents do not pay a membership fee. And you see, we have four hundred eighty-four resident members, and we have two hundred and forty-five non-resident members. Non-resident members pay twenty-five for an individual and thirty-seven, fifty a couple. But let's remember, that is an annual fee, not a monthly fee, so that's very, very minimum cost to those non-residents. Fitness programs are operating at capacity. If there is one underutilized program area at this facility, it would be our woodwork and shop, and we've just seen a decrease in the utilization of that particular program, and staff feel that we could probably change the delivery of how we operate the woodwork and shop to realize some savings there. Parking is inadequate, if you're ever at this facility on a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday morning, we're parked down on the back street, along the side street, and we also spill over into the First Baptist Church, who has been kind enough to allow us to use their parking areas during the weekdays, which creates an unsafe condition because we're asking seniors to walk across a very busy street to get back to our facility. Potential to increase revenue of this facility, we do have the opportunity, and are asking this year, and our fee schedule changes, to increase the non-resident fees. These fees were established in nineteen ninety-eight and have never been increased. And again, we're targeting non-residents because they don't pay city taxes, which subsidizes the operation of this facility.
What do you, what is the plan to increase to what?
To go from twenty-five for an individual to sixty, and to go to ninety for the couple. And if you divide that, it seems like a big jump, but if you divide that by twelve, that's going to be about five dollars a month. So for five dollars a month, they're going to get all the fitness programs, you know, all with the facility.
How much additional money would that bring?
About eight thousand extra dollars if that would increase. J-Race Shoot Center, this facility, what kind of jumps out off the screen is how well-rounded our program use is. You can see that thirty percent of the programs offered at this facility, or thirty percent of the participation at this facility is in educational programming. Our operating cost is a hundred and nine, six hundred sixty-seven thousand, and some of the reasoning we think that the educational program is so strong here is that the average participant age tends to be a little bit younger, kind of that six to twelve. Also, we have a very strong partnership with the housing authority. Also, we're located directly across the street from the housing authority, so when those buses come to drop those kids off after school, they typically come right into our center during a time period when all of our educational programming is taking place.
One, I have a question, what is the graphic you're showing on the side up there, what is that?
Well, that represents our average daily usage.
So you're talking about that, how many, that's how many people go in there that-
That's how many people come in there per day. And then the chart on the right, again, is what they do once they're there. So that's kind of what program areas, what the percentage is in program areas. So at that facility, as you saw, 2012, it was an average sixty-two, we dropped a little bit, and thirteen to fifty-three, and then we jumped back up to sixty-three for like this point here.
Tanya, I see you have an average participant age of six to twelve, do you have an idea as to participation of the thirteen to eighteen year olds?
It is lower, I don't have that information, and most of that participation does take place in that twenty-two percent of open gym. However, we do still see a lot of the kids from this area continue to go to the Winchester Gym to play there because that's what they were used to for a long time before this facility was built. So a lot of the older kids in this neighborhood still go over to Winchester for open gym use. The old armory, forty-seven percent is rentals and meetings, and that's no surprise, we have a banquet facility there, so that is heavily utilized for rentals and meetings. And also, I need to mention that the rental usage is not included in the standard usage. I didn't have a good way of doing that, to not skew all the numbers across all facilities. So I don't, you know, we don't want it to seem that this is an underutilized facility because it is very heavily utilized, but the majority, forty-seven percent of that is in the rentals and meetings. The next highest usage area is the twenty-eight percent, and that is for the YWCA program. This is a program that operates out of this building and provides after-school and full daycare during the summer months. Annual operating cost is eighty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars. Again, rental usage is not included, and it is heavily utilized in meetings and rentals. The fitness, we do have a membership for the fitness room there, and we do charge fees, and we charge fees for residents and non-residents. For a resident, it's twenty-five dollars, and this is an annual fee, five dollars for a resident senior, non-residents are seventy-five dollars, and those are annual fees. We do believe, you, you see there's only eighteen percent usage in that fitness room, but a lot of the reason for that is because from the fitness room, when the banquet area is being used for rentals and events, that fitness area has to be used. So if we could open the fitness room probably for more hours, you would see that percentage begin to rise. Again, talking about partnership with YWCA, this is a great partnership for us because what it does is we provide the facility, and they provide staffing and all the funding that goes along to provide this program. We had the opportunity to put these type programs in other facilities, other recreation facilities, certainly like to do that, but it's a funding issue on the Y side. This program is primarily funded through United Way, and there are just not any additional funds right now to increase their programs in the run.
Tanya, do you have to bring the kids in, bust the kids into that program or-
They do bust the kids in. They work with the school system, and so the buses drop the participants off at that rec center.
Do other people use them besides the memberships? Do we have people that come in, maybe one time or something, and they come in and pay a one-time fee, or do they-
For the fitness room, I know it's just a few memberships, but they're daily fees. Also, here we've seen growth at this facilities in senior programming through weekly socials, they have weekly card days and field trips. Also, a lot of the usage in that fitness room is senior usage. Subpart, highest percentage of use is in the open gym, however, key here is that twenty-nine percent in educational programming. That has taken a huge jump in the last couple of years. Annual operating cost is eighty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars. And we believe that one of the main reasons we've seen an increase in the participation in educational programming is that next bullet point. The center supervisor there formed a youth advisory board in 2014. Those children are aged thirteen to eighteen, they work with the center supervisor to assist in planning programs. Peer pressure is a powerful tool, whether it be positive or negative. In this case, we're seeing a positive influence of peer pressure because these kids are going out and urging other kids to come and participate in programs that they are helping to plan. This is something we're going to repeat at the other recreational centers, and we're currently working at Winchester Center to establish a youth advisory board there.
Do you have an idea as to the number of kids that's involved with that advisory board or company?
I think we have eight on that board right now. We do serve a large Hispanic demographic at this facility, it does help that the center supervisors by the way of this facility. Winchester Center, open gym sees the largest usage here, we do have a problem getting kids participating in educational programming, and again, we hope that by establishing that advisory board, that we can increase participation in those programs. We have a annual operating cost of a hundred ninety-six thousand dollars, a hundred ninety-six, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. A hundred forty-eight thousand, a little, little less than a hundred forty-nine thousand goes to operate the gym, the pool, and the basement meeting rooms. Ceramics costs us about forty-four thousand dollars a year. And unfortunately, ceramics program, we have seen a decrease in participation in that program, where in 2014, we averaged about five days of participants. Potential savings, you know, we could look at maybe delivering that program differently, or trying to increase participation, but if there are any savings in any of the programs there, we could certainly reallocate those dollars to possibly better meet the needs in that community. Opportunities, we certainly have the opportunity to engage the community members and try to solicit input. That is key across all of our great centers and all of our communities. We need to better market our programs and facilities. Currently, the way we market these programs is through a quarterly program guide, it's going to move into all the elementary schools and to the middle school. But what we're hearing through community-wide surveys that have been associated or have been done through our master plan update, and also a survey that we do specifically in Winchester community, is this is, doesn't seem to be the best method for providing that information anymore. So staff is currently working on better ways of marketing our programs. We need to collectively evaluate and prioritize existing programs. And after doing that, we need to realize that there are any potential savings, do we need to eliminate any programs, and can we reallocate funds if the programs are eliminated into programs that better meet the needs of these communities? In summary, you know, program variety does exist at the facilities. Whether or not these are the programs that the communities want to see us offering is what we've got to find out. We need, and again, we need to evaluate and prioritize the current programs to see if we can operate more efficiently or better serve these communities, develop better marketing strategies, and then if there are any, you know, potential funds that we save in one area, can we reallocate and really better meet those community needs. Under the Country Club golf course, this is, what you're seeing on this screen is the number of rounds, total number of rounds that are played at golf courses. And you can see twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, we have seen increases in those numbers. One thing that I want to put, point out is that out of that thirty thousand, twenty rounds that were played 2014, sixty-three percent were non-member rounds. That's a very important number, as I show you this next slide. Memberships have either, they've taken a slight decline. So if memberships are going to stay flat or decline, then we know to generate additional revenues, we've got to have more that we play, and so that's been an emphasis at the golf course. Ballroom rentals have remained fairly steady, 2012, we were still kind of climbing back out of all the poor economy, a lot of folks weren't going to Christmas parties, so that hurt the rentals at this facility. Had a big jump back in thirteen, then we kind of fell off a little bit in fourteen. Currently looking at projections for the rest of this year, we feel like we're going to be back, you know, more than that 2013 range. Operating deficit at the Country Club, we have been able to reduce the operating deficit to about eighty-six thousand dollars over the last two years. Staff feel that we can continue to reduce this deficit, revenues are up, and we project they're going to continue to rise, so we're working very hard to operate as efficiently as we can to reduce this number.
Does it, does it increase deficit?
It's huge, but again, it's eighty-six thousand less than it was two years ago. Opportunities, increase revenue through outings and programs, increase daily non-member rounds, we need to better market the programs and facilities for the special emphasis on women, juniors, and seniors. Enhance improved equipment preventative maintenance programs. To save money at this facility, we have got to get as much as we can get out of all of our equipment, in order to do that, it has to be well-maintained. We're currently working with our department-wide mechanics to try to put preventative maintenance programs in place that will do that. And then continue to realize savings with prudent economic practices. If we can do it in-house, we're doing it in-house, we're not contracting it out. If we can use a generic fungicide, then we're using a generic fungicide to save money. And in summary, non-member rounds have continued to increase, ballroom rentals have remained stable, creative mark, creative marketing strategies need to continue, maintenance staff, they've maintained, maintained excellent course conditions while still reducing our operating costs. And we do know that we have to put out a quality product in order for revenues to continue to increase. Golfers have a lot of choices now where they play, and in order for them to play at your facility, it has to be a quality facility. We need to continue to increase our outings and tournaments to generate additional revenue in that area, and also, we're going to continue to realize savings through prudent economic practices. That concludes my presentation.
I hear lots of times, and I'm sure from the other staff at Council, how much- all, how much better that golf course is, how nice it is. My question would be, and I don't, how could we reach out and do a better, or do a better job reaching out to so many of these organizations that does benefit that, you know, go here and there? Of course, it's mixed up everywhere. I wonder if there's some way we could do something to draw more of them to us, more than what we're giving.
And we're trying to do that. We've got the American Red Cross that hosts their tournament. The homeless shelter hosts their tournament. It's one of the biggest tournaments we do. And word of mouth has been great because as the facility, you know, has improved, and the service that we provide for tournaments has improved, we are starting to generate more interest. But as you say, that is an area that we have got to tap into.
Yeah, there's some way we could reach out to those folks, and I, I'm not in that business, but I, I have heard many times over how much greater that golf course is. And that's a good job. Thank you very much.
Next up, let me, next up is Pete.
Give me one second.
Providing comments and insights on a potential branding initiative.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to present this. Like the manager said, creating identity through community branding. Monroe, Monroe is a difficult cell at times. Within the region, within our area, within our city, we are looked upon one way. Outside of our city, we're looked upon another way. So the question I want to pose to you is, what is Monroe? We have an identity with our airshow. We have an identity with our aerospace hub and, and other things. We've also got an identity with the great downtown. We've got great events. We've got great activities. We've got a fantastic corporate center. We've got great history inherited within our city, and we've got great people. People make Monroe. But again, this is my take on it. The people in Monroe are dedicated to Monroe. What we're looking at doing is branching out past Monroe. What do we want to be, what do we want to be known as outside of Monroe? And what are we going to do to get there? How, what are the steps that we're going to take to make that possible, to become a destination, to become a city? You, you hear Mooresville, Race City, you hear, you hear Hilton Head. You have a vision of what Hilton Head is. When you hear Monroe, I don't know what you hear outside of the residents of Monroe. One way to accomplish it is through community branding. As you can see here, branding's going to set us apart from everyone else. Branding is what organizations do, companies, businesses. We do it internally. You look here, I believe we have eleven different logos, eleven different monikers that identify us. So we're already doing this internally to market ourselves and market our events. So why not do that on a more regional scale to bring us all in under one umbrella and attract business, industry, and residential? We're all from Monroe, or you all from Monroe. I've lived here for a while. I do not live in the city. I'd like to pose this question to you. What would you say, two or three words describes Monroe? Anyone want to take a stab? Mary, somebody asked you, what's Monroe?
Well, they're unique. It's got, as you just showed on the screen there, we have various offerings such airport, downtown, and et cetera. So I think that sets us apart to some point. But we need to get to the rest of the point, as you've been talking about. And, and at some point, we, and when I say we have to talk about all of us, employees, capital, everyone, it's about to come together and make, figure out what we really need to do to make Monroe a destination. And we talk about this all the time. That's all we're doing is talking about. Well, we need to come together and come to some conclusion and do it.
Yes, sir. Piggybacking on that, I did an informal poll through social media to people within Monroe. Tell me what Monroe is to you, three to five words. And a lot of the responses echoed a lot of what those of you that were at the retreat shit. So what do people say about Monroe? It's got great small-town charm. It's got a wonderful downtown. It's a great place, great people. Perfect place to raise a family. Quaint, peaceful hometown. Cool, laid-back town. A town with a lot. My home. What you would expect from people that live in the city to, to share. And, and I'm going, not all responses were favorable, but I would say about seventy-five to eighty-five percent of responses from within Monroe were favorable along those lines. Now, you step outside of that line, what do people who do not live in Monroe, whether they be from Charlotte, Raleigh, outside of Monroe, say about Monroe? Where is Monroe?
Well, if, well, hey, everybody goes straight down seventy-four.
Absolutely. Monroe is nothing but stoplights and traffic on seventy-four. Monroe is a town you go through, through the beach, or you pass to get to the beach. From Ohio, Michigan, and even Canada, you come down seventy-seven, eighty-one, hit seventy-four, and you go to the beach. It's a boring, middle-class town. And I want to thank our, our three youth council volunteers for this, for this picture.
Letting know it was active, rattling real big.
That was an early morning flight out of Austin, so. But it's boring. There's nothing to do here. Unless there's an event, unless there's an activity scheduled, there's not a lot to do for people, whether you live here or you're visiting here. And you get a ticket, you got a deed. It's, Monroe's where you go to get, go to court to pay your ticket. Okay? So why do we need brand? We need a well-defined brand, and I'm not going to read this for you. You all can read. We need an identity. We need this identity to make Monroe a more desirable location for business, industrial, commercial, retail, as well as visitors and residential. We're competing with everybody, and just like a business, we don't compete, we don't market ourselves. We're going to lose out. We lose customers, and which, as we're facing, you guys are facing, it's going to put a heavier financial burden on our residents. And the bottom thing is one of the most important things. If we don't do it, others will do it for us. Just like that, that last slide that, that people outside of our city are saying, they're dictating what we are. We don't have the control. We're not the ones putting our message out there. A unified plan is needed. The vision is going to, again, hopefully spur business, investment to Monroe, tourism, visitor spending, industrial revenues, drive our future, but it will also unify our city and give us a strategic roadmap on what we want to do, how we want to do it, and what are the important things to us. We can't do this in-house. We don't have the staff. We don't have the capabilities. We need somebody to lead us. We need professional guidance, experienced and assessable company. Somebody that's done this, somebody that has municipal brand, community branding expertise. We need collaboration. You all need to be part of the, of the solution. Staff, residents, the community, because that's where it starts. The community and you all that live here are the ones that have to live it and promote it and sell it. And it needs to be a long-term investment, one, three, five, with benchmarks, with qualitative data, quantitative, qualitative data that we can see it's working. But it's not going to be overnight. You're not going to invest this money, and next, next week, you're going to have people knocking on your door. This is a process. We have to build it, and it needs to be funded.
Well, that third line said exactly what I've said many times, and y'all, where we say, we need somebody to sell ourselves. And it's not going to happen in one year. And until we do that, and we all come together and find what we want to do, we've got to do it, and do it now, that, that's going to go right on down the river like rocket always. And you hear me, and I don't mean to take the show.
Yes, sir.
Over there on seventy-four, how many signs can you count, say downtown Monroe, it's about like this, about a twelve, a twelve, a twelve, a ten. You stand on seventy-four, east to west, I, I use east because the towns are, are mirror us better than it does to the west. But if you go east on seventy-four, you've got big signs all over seventy-four. Leamerton, Whiteboard, whatever, the big signs. And I'm not, I don't know why we don't qualify for a sign other than twelve, a twelve says Monroe. So I've said that a million times, and we don't get it done. So we're right back right now where we've been hollering about for the last several years.
Monroe has got one thing right now that, that if it gets done, will make a big difference, and that's something. It would bring nightlife into Monroe, it would bring restlessness in Monroe. But Monroe is Monroe, and, and it's the same as, as the other towns in the ring. Look at Concord. They've got the racetrack. We don't have that. But other than that, there's nothing exciting going on. There's not anything exciting going on in Monroe. If you want a center theater to light, then you would bring enthusiasm to try to bring back the downtown.
I, I, I agree, Lynn. And I agree one hundred percent, but I think we need to, we need to be bigger than just a center theater. We need to create an identity for ourselves to say, okay, if somebody's looking at us, okay, Concord, well, they're okay, but Monroe, Gateway, or whatever. We need to market that. We need to sell that. If we don't get our name out, if we don't get ourselves out there, then we're doing a disservice because we're not even part of the equation.
Well, you got, you got to realize that Rock Hill's in the state, Concord's in the state, Salisbury's in the state, Statesville's in the state. Monroe has done pretty very well considering the fact this bypass will help Monroe. If we don't have businesses on seventy-four.
And, and, and please don't get me wrong in saying that where a bad job has been done. I'm just saying we can do it better creating an identity for ourselves to, to help market ourselves moving forward. Forget about what we've done. We've done some great things with the airport, the, the industrial center, but moving forward, it's, it's tough out there, and we've seen it.
Well, that's what's your idea. As Lynn says, if ever states are not great, that is a help. But what we need to do is that back looks there. But we're going to have to work a little bit harder. We're going to have to have a little better idea. And again, I, I won't say this because I won't even say it's done. We all need to come together and figure out what we need to do and do it.
But, yeah, I agree, sir. Lynn, I, I don't have the answer. I, I, I think we need to explore a, a company, a company like North Star or Net Mojo that specializes in community branding, community marketing, marketing. Bring them in and see what they can do for us. Yes, ma'am.
I agree with you to, to a point. I think that in order for us to get a brand, put it out there, it's got to be something that's very inclusive. It's got to be a place where people are proud to be found, where they feel a sense of ownership. So we need to involve symmetry. Maybe we do need a company to direct us, but it's going to take the people that's here to do it, make it work. Because we can say whatever we please, but it does not, what it actually is.
Well, I, I think it, it's twofold. It's actually circular. It starts with community, starts with you all, goes out, goes out to the region, and comes back to the community. The community is going to be the ones who are going to be the cheerleaders and the salespeople as well.
The, the barbecue, which Bobby started, that's, brings people in. It's a fun, it's a fun event. Your airshow is a fun event. And we don't have a like normal, which is going to bring people out there. The center theater could be one possibility to help. But you, unless you bring in events, I don't see Monroe ever being a type of city that's, that's really going to do what you're talking.
Wait, what? I don't, I don't envision this as a marketing to bring visitors in. I envision this as, hey, look at our city. This is what we have. We've got all the natural gas you could ever want, right, Don? We've got all the water that you want. We've got this. We've got the land. We've got, you know what I mean? Not just, hey, come visit us because we want you to spend money here. This is a global movement that, that transcends just visitors. We're looking retail, corporate, industrial, and residential.
Any, any, anything of any magnitude that comes to this county, like used to always when it was happening, we'd be waiting. And they still have a lot of waiting. But now where do they go? They go out here to the Axon. There's nothing in this, in our city that draws the shows and some of these other draws. I know, but we have a great country club. We've got great armory, and they do great. I don't, I can't give them enough praise. But we need something where we can bring some of these other shows. Because I've always said this, and I'm not looking for a Coliseum that fits Shaw. We need something that fits Monroe, that we can bring these shows in here, but they all will have to go to the Axon.
I, I agree. I think there in City Council, what, I, I've asked Pete to present this to you all and tee it up. It's, we're not presenting it today saying it will be funded. It is, I, I think it is important, but it is one of a number of strategies that we might take. But your last comment I heard is more of a bricks and mortar strategy. This is, this is more of a program to help create an identity, reinforce an identity amongst our community that we can use to pitch beyond our corporate limits. And if, not to steal Pete's closing line, but if more doesn't think it's important, we'll move on to something else.
So that's three hundred percent important. But it's also, and I don't, apparently nobody ever agrees with it because we don't ever get off the ground. We don't have anything in the city of Monroe that you can hold any size of it. They've got to go to wing, or they've got to go to the Axon.
I agree with you, Hunter.
And if you bring somebody here and down there, you forget it. This is a three hundred percent thing. I, I give it all of my support.
Ma'am, I, I think Larry and I are on board. I think most councils on board with that. I think that and this are dissimilar in pieces, but together, they could work.
You got to put it all together.
Oh, you know, so partners, Tourism Development Authority has allocated forty thousand dollars in this year's budget for branding slash weight finding. So that money can be allocated to it. It would need some, I don't have specifics. I've been talking with a couple of companies. I don't have specifics on, on what it costs would be. But looking at some other things, to run a full-fledged campaign like we, we would need, you're probably looking at close to a hundred thousand dollars over, over the year, over the two to three years. And what it looks like specifically, I, I'm sorry, I don't have those answers for you, but that's why we need the professional guidance. Tourism, like I said, has forty thousand dollars already this year, could potentially put some more in for next year. General fund would have to contribute. Economic development would help on the guidance side and the marketing side. I don't think they would do much on the financial side. They went through this process about a year ago and identified different sectors of, of recruitment, so I'm not sure they would be involved. But I believe it would be a boom for energy services and water resources because we would be attracting businesses and consumers within their marketplace. So that's kind of where I'm at. If we don't do something, that's fine. If we're happy with where we're at, I'm fine. We serve you all. This is just an, an idea, a concept that we believe could help move the city forward and, and help us in the future.
Chuck, a couple of questions and comments. I was correct on the civic center. We couldn't afford it, or we, we actually got voted down on a bond vote or something that, from outsiders, not even the people inside the city. I think her name was Fern Sheen. But, you know, to have a destination, you got to have something people come visit.
Absolutely.
And whether it be the center theater, civic center, you know, those are still things. A civic center is something that the mayor could, who could, could work on.
Well, I don't either. And when I say that, I mean one that fits Monroe. Not a civic center that fits Gray's or Shaw. We don't need one that, we need, we just need some kind of venue that we can bring some of this stuff to Monroe instead of shuffling it out and, and somewhere, and some other venue. And what you've got them here, again, I repeat myself, I think it's great. I'm backing it a hundred percent. If we don't, if we don't start somewhere, sometime, we're going to be right where we were three years ago. We should have done this three years ago.
But you know, we went to, we went to Virginia on our search to build a business park. And Alvin was a little town we stayed in that night. But I'm telling you, they had the, down to civic center, I'd ever seen. Down in the lower part, they could actually have radios, see about six thousand people. You go upstairs, I mean, it was phenomenal. And it was not, that town, I wouldn't think right on about this particular town.
Along those lines, just, just for your information, we're not ready to totally push forward with it. TDA is working on a couple of initiatives for an attraction. Don't know exactly what it looks like, but we are moving forward with that because an attraction, a destination, is sorely needed within the city of Monroe.
You know, as far as your golf course, you did have something unique about that golf course. It's the last nine home dollar roster design, and people that play that front line, and really, it's so special.
So Mayor, Council, Manager, that kind of concludes my presentation. Again, for information and happy to discuss in the future.
Good job.
That, that we leave that number throughout there, is that strictly to fund hiring the company to develop this, that one?
I believe it would help fund. I, I believe it would help fund the company as well as create some direct marketing materials and some strategic advertising placements throughout the region and specific, um, you know, magazines, destinations, stuff like that.
You already got the forty, uh, that I did on the tourism side. And would there be any other chance to tap into those other partners there you mentioned, other than the city of Monroe's general fund? That's the next question.
Yes, sir, I, I've reached out to, to Don Mitchell and, uh, Russ Colbat, and they said they would, without giving a specific number, they, they said they'd be willing participants.
Well, and that seems like a, a, a doable thing that, that we as a council could, could be able to, you know, we will have been down and not asking for the whole hundred.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, that seems to me to be something Bobby said, we've been talking about it for a long time, we're not really moving forward with it, and, and the number's not gonna be that high if you have some partners, so I, I think there should be a way to find some funds.
Is that the next step, is to get some funds and then they get the company?
Well, yes, my, manager, correct me if I'm wrong, my next step would be to reach out to different companies, see what they would offer and see what their cost would be, and see if that fit within us, and if, if they come back and say, well, it's a three hundred thousand dollar thing, we'll say, well, thank you, we'll do something different.
Our request for qualifications, our request for proposal process.
I think, I think it'd be a good idea, we'll get you out and, you know, come back and make a deal.
And, and we can also say, okay, we're gonna designate, we're gonna put a hundred thousand dollar cap on it and include that in our, you know, requests, say, hey, maybe not saying this is what we've got, but what can, what, what is the best we can get for this? There, there's, there's just some unknowns right now because we are in the early stages, and I, I think, uh, again, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, we're, I'm looking, and Mayor's looking, just a little direction, if it's a good idea, we'll explore it further, if not, we'll let it die here.
Well, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, I don't think it's one that's been, you know, if, if something keeps coming around, you know, and, and it, it must be something to it, in my opinion, and, and we are sorely lacking in that regard, like I said, we just have to also, outside of the city of Monroe, we said before, introducing us, uh, we need to introduce ourselves to the area and region.
So, do you need a motion, or can we just tell you to go ahead and do it?
So, just ask them, I think.
We'll, we'll, we'll consider studying this, this, all these things are being teed up for questions. We're, we're hearing the message.
So, move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got about a little less than forty-five minutes, uh, by our count clock remaining for, or with the boards indulgence, I'd like to begin our SWAC presentations. Few introductory comments. Uh, what is, what is SWAC? Uh, it's an analysis or a matrix used, uh, for, as a planning method, exploring four major aspects of an organization's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Uh, and the effort can help explore critical areas of an organization's, uh, programs, its existence, its projects, uh, even its reputation or goodwill. A number of our departments use this methodology currently, and we've extrapolated that to a, a number of our other departments. On the next slide, I've suggested a sequence, uh, it's a lot, and it's the bottom lower left, uh, box that I'm, I'm focusing on. I'd like to begin with HR, or Deborah, as time permits, we'll sequence through the other general fund departments. I don't expect us to get through all of them, and those that we don't finish today can carry forward to March seventeenth. Mr. Boyd is so inclined to have, uh, as requested in your regular agenda this evening, another workshop beginning at approximately four o'clock. And with that, I'd like Deborah.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for giving us opportunity to share with you, uh, our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And I told me I'm supposed to use this little tutorial here. And looking at, uh, the strengths of human resources and staff, uh, we're extremely passionate about what we do. We're experienced in the field, we're finally fully staffed, so that really makes a big difference for us, and we're service oriented in terms of trying to make sure that we satisfy our employees' motivation and make sure that their general well-being both internally and externally, um, are taken care of as far as our customers are concerned. HR offers a number of strategic planning events that allow for organizational awareness, creative solutions and problem solving, um, supportive, nurturing, um, our work environment across department lines, we get a chance to see all of our departments, and using some of the programs, um, we have the A.I.S. breakfast where all of our employees have an opportunity to sit back and talk with the city manager, and what that stands for is employee-generated great suggestions. So, um, the, the city manager has an opportunity to share with them what's going on with the city, and they have an opportunity to share with the, uh, city manager and get questions answered, our employee appreciation, employee wellness program, and our citizens academy. We also have, um, human resources, um, in terms of preparing the red carpet, whether or not that is the, uh, mayor or a street cleaner, whenever you come to our doors, we try to make sure we read out, we roll out the red carpet for you, um, to make sure that we make you welcome, we answer any questions on the front end, so that if you have questions, concerns about policies, that we make sure that we explain those to you and, um, that you don't go through the door and not feel unwelcome to the HR department. And looking at weaknesses, there are consistent performance reviews. We have a policy in place for performance reviews, but inconsistent pay for performance merit increases, uh, limited funds to complete new programs such as our compensation and benefits survey. The city has a well-defined program, and, uh, we do not use it consistently, which is really not a good practice. If you use it consistently, um, you would find that your employees will have stake in, in what they're doing, productivity increases, the success of the overall city, um, becomes important to all of our employees, but keep in mind, when you pay for daily earnings, uh, for, for performance, it's just as important, so we have to make a commitment for our performance, um, based program to be looked at every year. It shouldn't be something that is set aside, um, to support just the general budget, but to support our employees in general. Succession planning is a practice, um, in most of our departments, the larger departments is easier to do, the smaller departments is hard to prepare for succession planning in terms of our nearing retirement workforce. Um, limit and time-consuming HR reporting data, we work with the, um, same reporting data that all of our departments use, whether it's billing, whether it's energy services, our H, uh, our IT department does a wonderful job, except for when it comes to HR reporting for outside organizations, we have to do a lot of manual work to get the data set up so that we can answer the questions, um, externally. Many demands, increased programs and limited staff to serve the programs. The theory for HR is normally, um, one HR person to every hundred employee. Right now, we have one HR person to a hundred and forty employees.
Excuse me, Deb, do you want to tell us a little bit more about succession planning?
On the succession planning, uh, basically, what you try to do is you develop your departments so that you can have someone move into place whenever your key employees leave or retire. You want someone to be prepared, trained, so they could step in, and you don't have to use a lot of, um, reto, um, I guess recruiting dollars to go out and try and someone to replace them, and also the curve for someone learning your organization becomes a little bit more difficult. Opportunities, consistent budget for updating the city's compensation and, um, benefit survey, that is recommended for every five years. Uh, our last one was two thousand and eight, so we really wanna take an opportunity to make sure that we, uh, utilize the benefit survey. Invest in a more useful, friendly human resources recording system, which goes back to the, um, HTE process under Sun Guard. Um, for us to analyze our data, we kind of need something that is a little bit more up to date, uh, even though, uh, we're getting what we need, we just have to work a little bit harder in terms of how we, um, get the information. Available, um, external support for employee training citywide, uh, self-service programs that will put routine requests at the fingertips of all of our employees, and certain organizations, you can have kiosks that are set up in various departments, and we have employees that come to us all the time for changing their W four, changing, um, addresses, and that's an ongoing process because they're trying to get the best tax rate they possibly can based on increases. And when you have kiosks set up in different places, they can do that themselves instead of having to come out of the department to come see us, and based on us being a small department, it takes away some of the, um, the, uh, daily activities that we're responsible for. Allowing best practices in human resources that are available. Um, the healthcare reform and the benefits enhancements, healthcare reform can be a challenge for us, but in actuality, it did something really good for our employees when it actually extended that employees', um, children, because they wanted a plan to twenty-six. That was really, um, a, a saver because most of the nineteen to thirty were employees' children who did not have benefits at all. So, when the healthcare reform came about, it allowed our employees' children to stay on our plan, um, until age twenty-six. Now, even though I said healthcare reform was an issue, uh, as a good thing, now it becomes a threat because with the restraints of healthcare reform, um, full-time status of employees have been changed a lot, like we would have part-time and temporary, um, positions where it would cover vacancies. Now, you have a constraint where if you have a part-time or temporary person, they cannot work over twenty-eight hours and go into the thirty-hour status. Um, when you do that, you have to give them benefits. So, in that respect, it causes us a little bit of challenges of trying to get positions filled on a temporary basis until we hire a full-time person, so we have to watch the hours that we're using them. Provide high level of service internally and externally, um, with less funding and staffing. Uh, increase, uh, turnover due to a number of reasons, including, but not limited to the medical costs and our wages staying flat. So, when you increase the, the healthcare and, um, employees are still working with the same dollar figure for a long period of time, it causes some stress on them. Um, our grade table is competitive, but when you remain flat, you're not competitive to all the companies on the outside based on your actual hourly salary or your annual salary. Um, increasing demands on service needs and reporting requirements.
That's a quick question. Uh, so you're saying that employees, we have internal with us employees who are able to leave the building with the city, go somewhere else and make more money and, uh, and get a, uh, equal to or better healthcare coverage and carry home more money?
Well, we have a good plan except for maybe some companies might pay more money for it or pay for it totally. Uh, not all, there are a few companies out there that will cover the whole cost of benefits, and then if they increase them a couple of dollars, it looks good to the employee. Not necessarily saying that grass is greener on the other side, but we are having employees that leave for various reasons like that.
We put a million dollars in it last year.
Well, what, I'll tell you, um, and you're putting that down as a, as a reason for employees leaving. Now, the, the employees that are leaving, are there, are there other reasons that they're leaving as well?
Yeah, I said it's not limited to, there are a number of reasons, that's just a couple that's out there, um, it could be that they wanted that particular job, it could be that, um, uh, they have real.
It could be that they no longer able to get along with the supervisor or coworkers.
Possible, yeah. So, it's a number of things, so that's why I said it wasn't limited to that, that's just, uh, one that keeps coming up for a lot of employees, and not so much the medical versus the flat dollar figure, that hasn't changed over a period of time.
Would employees, do they do an exit interview?
Yes, those, um, they do an exit interview if you are not terminated. If you left on your own accord, then you would actually get an exit interview. Any other questions? Thank you.
Debra will be followed by Lisa, who will present you with, uh, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats assessment for finance.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Um, I'm here to talk about our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats for the finance department. As you know, the finance department, uh, has many different hats, uh, we spread across through purchasing, uh, fleet maintenance, customer service, so we, we provide a wide array of, uh, of services to the various departments in the city. There it goes, sorry. Some of the strengths of our, uh, division are dedicated staff members with strong institutional history and experience. Uh, eighteen out of thirty of our employees have more than ten years of, of tenure with the city, and twenty-five out of thirty have more than, uh, five years. Uh, we have a customer service focus inherently because that is our job, we provide customer service to, uh, the other city departments as well as external customers. Um, you know, as I mentioned, we have purchasing, fleet maintenance, we have warehouse. Externally, we bill for utilities, taxes, generate those, uh, revenues for the city, and we serve as the front line for all the utility connections, disconnections, complaints. We also have strengths, uh, with our bond ratings. Uh, the finance department is responsible for, uh, maintaining their reviews with standard employers and the other rating agencies. Uh, as I mentioned to, uh, the council last month, we had a recent review and the outlook was stable for the city. Uh, this saves us money when we borrow, uh, to do projects within the city, we can get favorable interest rates. And we also have the award for financial reporting for twenty-one consecutive years. Um, what this involves is a third-party independent review of our annual financial report, and they evaluate our ability to function and maintain practices that are compliant within the generally accepted accounting principles. Uh, finance department weaknesses, like Deborah mentioned, succession planning is in some of the smaller divisions, becomes a, a challenge. Um, it's hard just to, to get the time and, you know, that, that level of comfort in those smaller areas. Um, you know, if we have any staff turnover, it becomes a challenge to fill that void, and sometimes we end up contracting for additional outside training or software training because we've lost that knowledge when somebody leaves. Uh, we also have a weakness in some of our business processes. We still use paper time sheets, paper work orders for our utility, um, billing, uh, work orders to, to turn it on and off your services, paper travel and check requests. We have manual routing process for all of our approvals, like our contracts and stuff. Uh, we have outdated financial reporting software. It does the job, it's very powerful software, but it's not user-friendly, it's hard to get data out and arrange it in a useful fashion. Um, it's just a little time-consuming for us to make it presentable and useful. Numerous policies and procedures are outdated, they're just in need of rewriting just to kind of match the current practices. You know, these policies are really needed to assist staff with the daily activities and just provide guidance as they work through our process. Um, public awareness and support, you know, even when we've done community forums in the past, it seems really difficult to get that community engagement. Um, I'd like to see more, you know, community participation through the budget process, and, you know, even working with utility customers, you can tell there's not a real firm understanding of some of the practices or policies. Um, we have increasing demands in the finance department with the limited number of staff that we have, so we have to find more creative ways to evaluate the services that we provide and then provide funding or structure our programs so that we can maintain the service levels that's, that is expected by our customers. Um, you know, different reporting requirements and changes in legislation, you know, increase our inability to, you know, maintain, you know, some of those service levels.
Lisa, why is the, um, software outdated and is that working with the city's, um, computer system, or is this another system that you would have to get in order to be compatible? What would you have to do to be able to get some up-to-date software?
It's very pricey and labor-intensive. Um, the, the city's financial software is Sun Guard HTE, and it branches out through all of our divisions, our work orders, everything in the city is, is kind of rolled together with this financial system. And it branches out through all of our divisions, our work orders, everything in the city is kind of holding together with this financial system. Like I said, it's very powerful software, it really does the job. It's just that the technology has gotten so old, they've got newer versions that are available that, I guess, would be more user-friendly. The interface is more interactive and just more intuitive. To get to that point, I mean, we're talking probably $1.5 million in conversion fees. And then just the staff time and demand, you know, I'm afraid that we couldn't keep up with current workload and implement, you know, a whole new structure like that. You know, it'd be a huge undertaking and it'd be very costly.
How about, here it says numerous policies and procedure are outdated. Why do we not state in mind that if they outdated, you know, that's not a big cost to change a policy or procedure, is it?
No, it's just time to get, time to evaluate and time to get, you know, legal to approve and time, just time.
Well, you know, some of that stuff we could do, it was very, very low or no money. Of course, I know you got the time to do it, but if you got numerous policies and procedures are outdated, you know, we need to learn stuff like that.
And getting back to the cost of that reporting software, could that expense not be shared over a number of enterprise funds since this is so integrated? I mean, if these people are water sewer, you know, all of those things could be tapped, could they not?
Sure is, would be yes. And I believe general, general, probably like a 60-40 split in some of our other functions that are distributed or shared in enterprises.
Lisa, how many employees have had to leave the finance department in the last five years?
Greg did, cut.
Yeah, off the top of my head, that would be number one. The tax collector, we've been through two. That, we've had a little bit of turnover out at the garage. We did have one person.
Now, you say the garage, that was a finance person?
Yeah, the garage is overseen by the finance department, the city mechanics or a division of finance.
Okay, well, I'm primarily on that.
That's an athletic charge, sure enough.
But I think of finance.
We've got the garage and the finance department.
Your office, if you don't have that, with the ad machines, that's not.
In accounting division, we've only had one person turnover. In the customer service divisions, we've probably had four or five, you know, between all the divisions there. We've got billing, payment center and customer service.
Those are the people who collect the money and operate the 10-Q machines in that time frame?
Yeah, the accounting only has five people and we've only had one person.
If it may help, we've got, I've asked Deborah to zero in on some of those statistical numbers in her presentation on employee retention strategies, which is returning up for March 17th.
Sounds to me like, you're talking about retention, you have any employees, you say 20 years, how many with 10 years?
Well, that's what I was.
Yeah, I do, I have a lot of tenuring within all the divisions.
And the one employee you just mentioned retired, she came here like with 27 years of service. We hired her actually for three years, which, and she was a good employee, what I'm fixing to say don't mean to say. We need to look at that, if you're going to bring an outsider in that's ready to retire, we need to double what it's something like that. Because we only had the taxpayer for three years, now we're out looking for another. So.
It's rather challenging to get at that type of an issue during recruitment process. We're not, we're not able to distinct, to discriminate based on age.
Well, I didn't say do this. I'm just saying, you know, hire somebody that they fixing to retire next week.
But this was, but this was someone. This was someone that would retire previously, though, right?
Now, she had.
She had not retired.
She was kind of young, but I think she had some other family challenges that led her to.
Well, I still say it's not discriminating against anybody. You've got 100 applications, and you're going to hire somebody that's fixing to retire?
All I'm saying is most people don't walk in there and say, I'm retiring in two years.
No, you can probably look at their applications.
Where we at, we fixing to hire one now? Or I guess we're still in the process of hiring a tax collector, or what? Are we close to hiring anybody?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll play the rap that great while.
Well, Lisa, you know, I want to say thank you for, you know, and this is technically not, it's not supposed to be your presentation. You, you know, you've stepped up to the wheel and, you know, you're driving the department and I appreciate that. And you, you have not been the person that have been here or been in charge of the department being necessary where it is. You've always been a great employee at the city. And you've always fucked very well whoever happened to be at the helm while you were there. And I appreciate that. So in looking at some of the weaknesses and some of the challenges, I know that you have not had opportunity to maybe initiate policies or to change policies because it was not your department. So I just want to thank you for everything you've done.
I should do appreciate that, it's very special to me. Our opportunities, our weaknesses present opportunities. Technological advancements, we do have some solutions for workflow issues to get away from all those paper products that we're using for check requests, for contracts and for travel forms. Now, we've actually already purchased the software, it's just labor-intensive to implement. So as part of our budget proposal, we're going to try to present an implementation process that involves some of the design to be done by an outside group. Also, we have software to analyze trends. This is to work in conjunction with our outdated financial software. And hopefully, you know, put a new face on an old hat and just kind of give us a better way to evaluate the data. It'll be more interactive. We're hoping that it'll assist in decision-making and we're hoping to be able to use it next year to provide data to council. Again, the automation of the paper processes, we're constantly evaluating ways that we can, you know, correct, you know, even the timesheets. And we have some solutions, but again, you know, it falls down to budget constraints and time and resources to implement. Enhancing skills at the middle management level. You know, even with that one lady retiring, it's provided some opportunities for other people to step in and take over, just as I'm doing for Greg. And it provides a path for career advancement. You know, it gives them the opportunity to, you know, do that cross-training and succession planning. Hopefully, they have enough of it stepping in, most of them do, but the more we can get, it just, you know, gives us that consistency, that continuity. Threats. We're always plagued with the sustainability of our revenue stream as a city. And finance likewise, makes it difficult to provide the same level of service, you know, with no, you know, revenue to offset all of the inflationary increases. It makes it more difficult to present a balanced budget that meets all the council, community and staff needs. Staff retention, you know, could be a threat, I don't want to start losing people. We do have some increasing demands for services which burden staff. Some of the folks get a little bit burned out and hopefully they take a vacation and come back refreshed. But even then, when you come back from vacation, you're piled in. You know, non-competitive compensation and increasing medical costs make jobs in other cities or private industries more enticing. Like Deborah in the discussion prior to me, we have had some people leave, not particularly from finance. Well, I had one in finance that left, but, you know, I'm hoping that that doesn't become, you know, an issue for us, it can be just a threat. We have increasing report, reporting requirements that drain our resources. Most of them are as a result of those legislative changes that are happening at the state and federal level. As Deborah mentioned, the healthcare reform. We have a new reform that's going to be required for finance to send out to all employees that tracks the coverage of you and all of your dependents so that you can report that back to the IRS. You know, we have to constantly evaluate the IRS regulations just to stay compliant. And then the state reform, you know, the elimination of privileged license and potentially an alternative. You know, we're working through some of the options that we may have as a city there. And then just the ability for the city to fund purchases on installment financing. There's been some talk at the state level of maybe changing our ability to do that or requiring a vote to be able to do that, which would be terrible for us. We just, of course, did that for our fire station and would limit us tremendously. But I'll just continue to face every one of the threats and deal with them and move on. Any questions?
Sounds like you've got a good opportunity and some challenges ahead, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, Lisa will be followed by Chief Ron.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Mr. Manager. Certainly thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. Please don't stop me anytime asking the questions you may have. Our strengths, I'll just mention about those. As, I guess, all the departments are people. We've certainly got quality, quality people that do a great job, trained and certified in so many different areas. And we're just very, very fortunate to have the people that we have, the firefighters that we have. I guess the next would be the range of services we provide. As you know, it's much more than just fire, it's rescue, hazmat, emergency medical, code administration. So, so many services there and again, it's the people that make those services for our citizens what they are. Our strategic planning, I feel like that's a strength. We do a community-driven strategic plan, we're bringing communities in to be there input, do the five-year plan. The core values that our firefighters hold to, things such as safety and integrity and compassion and professionalism. Again, that make us what we are. A council and community support, we certainly cannot do what we do without the support of this council and other communities. And we, we do customer service surveys. And we always get back good feedback, good responses from our customers, high ratings. And when we don't, when we get one that's not a high rating, we find out why it's not. So we appreciate that being to score ISO rating. Currently in class three, as you know, that's only one to 10 scale with one being the best. Three is, three is very good, it could be better, but it's very, very good. So we certainly appreciate, we're very pleased with that. And then finally, we are accredited, we were accredited two years ago, about two and a half years ago, if you remember. Our weaknesses, one is, one big one, key one, is our lack of ability to maintain four-person companies. You know, this, this was a strength, but unfortunately, we lost positions because of the budget cuts two years ago in 2012. So we're not able to maintain those four-person companies. In fact, we're not even, can't even assign a four-person company. And that is a weakness. There's nationally recognized standards that indicate that. The national fire protection association recommends that you support minimum of four firefighters on companies. And we'll talk some more about that in a minute with the threats. The lack of a professional development program, one thing that we've, we've have tried to do over the last few years is implement a professional development program in the fire department. That would be great on that succession planning and preparing employers to move to the next step. The one thing that we're lacking is the pay incentives to go with that. This would be a similar program that other departments have done. Certainly something that we feel like is a weakness for us right now. We are out of compliance with our fire inspection schedule. We were in compliance up until 2012. And that's when we, again, unfortunately, lost the positions. We are out of compliance with that now. The last data I have on that, we're about 500 inspections behind on that inspection schedule. And the last one is our lack of dedicated public education programs. And again, we had those until, up until 2012 when we lost the positions and had to discontinue those programs. Our opportunities, what can we do to address that? We have a huge opportunity to increase our employee safety. And that's by going back to those four-person companies that we spoke about earlier. To increase our public safety by getting back on schedule with the inspection schedule that I spoke about earlier. So that we can, if there is a hazard out here in the public building, that hopefully we would, we would find that. To improve our effectiveness, there's various studies, I mentioned the four-person companies. One of the newest, National S G D Standards and Technology. Recently did some studies on fire department, firefighter effectiveness, fire company effectiveness. And those consistently show, both in residential and commercial tasks, that the four-person companies were much more effective than a two or three-person company. Variety of tasks, they were doing fire-related tasks. And consistently, they were more effective with the four-person companies. Maintain quality personnel. And again, I feel like that the implementation of that professional development program would help us, would certainly help us in that. Lower our commercial insurance costs, that's something we're always trying to do, is improve on, I mentioned our ISO rating earlier. We're currently in class three. Of course, a reduction in that would bring insurance costs down for our commercial and businesses. But certainly, we're always trying to do that. Threats, many of these go hand-in-hand, you know, once a weakness becomes a threat, a weakness becomes an opportunity. So many of these go hand-in-hand. Again, firefighter safety, with operating in the less than four-person company, is a threat to our employee safety. It just is, and that's something that we certainly, certainly need to address. The increased public risk, again, if it's not meeting that inspection schedule, we don't want to miss something that's out there, hazards in a public building. Our liability, I feel like there's a liability to the city in not meeting that inspection schedule. Loss of quality personnel, and again, speaking here about the pay incentives, the professional development program. I do want to say thank you for the action you took earlier, for the, for the raise in next year's, next year budget. Our employees certainly need that, so thank y'all for doing that, considering that. Anything you can do for our employees, they need that and we certainly appreciate that. No threats in increased commercial insurance costs, should we have a declaration in our ISO. Loss of accreditation status, as you recall, we were accredited in 2012, in August of 2012. We actually had a site visit in February of 2012. At that point, we were meeting all the core competencies. Unfortunately, when we lost the positions in the spring of 2012, we're no longer meeting all these core competencies. So that's, that's a threat. Finally, the loss of community confidence, and that's certainly something that we don't want to do as a fire department, as a city. We've got tremendous support and confidence from the community and certainly we don't want to lose that. So we have, we have structured our budget request to mitigate these weaknesses and threats. and threats, and so hopefully, we'll be able to do that through this budget process. I'd be glad to ask you any questions that, that you may have.
The only thing I want to say, Chief, is that I hope that we don't lose our accreditation status. Fire and police both are accredited internationally, and it's something that we need to maintain as much as we can, and that's certainly going to be a priority for me, and I'm sure it's important.
I appreciate that. Thank y'all.
Mayor, members of the council, I would suggest probably, that's probably the last SWAT. I've got some closing comments I would offer, and then that will leave you some time to, to those that care to, to grab the sandwiches that we've gotten for the group. I'd like to thank the staff for the presentations that they've provided today. I think it's going to raise your bar for the rest of us for March 17th and April 7th. I don't intend to rehash each of the presentations for you, but I would like to provide emphasis for your continuing evaluation for resourcing strategies and resourcing decisions, if you could. This highlights my takeaways on a couple sets of presentations. First, with facilities utilization. I think our facilities are being used adequately. In later presentations, staff will present insights on the degree deferred maintenance affecting those, those buildings as well as other areas of our capital plant. However, what I would pose to you as a broader question is, does the city adequately deliver recreational services across the spectrum of citizen interests in a cost-effective manner? And are we doing so in an actionable manner across all neighborhoods? Is that important to you? For instance, are we matching programs to demand? Is that important? Are we eliminating those lacking the following? Are we eliminating programs that lack a following or adding programs that are in demand that we haven't quite gotten to? Are we, is there interest in developing facilities for clusters of neighborhoods? In terms of branding, I think we got the message on that branding. In terms of the SWAT presentations, we heard from three of our department heads, HR, and there was a theme, I think, that you probably picked up across the first of three departments, but HR led, led the initiative, so to speak, at the form of paying benefits is increasingly affecting our organization. And what the board did today will send a very positive message across the staff and on behalf of the staff, thank you for what y'all did. It surprised me, but it's nice to surprise. Finance, my takeaway is finance is feeling impacted, technology and policy obsolescence. Fire, I spoke to staffing shortages and feels, also feels the effects of inadequate compensation. I don't know that there's, I don't suggest allocating time today for you to prioritize what you've heard. I'm interested in providing that opportunity to you. I'd like to approach that through email, perhaps, and ask that, following each of the scheduled presentations today, 17th, April 7th, that you prioritize what you've heard. We'll collect it back from you, you know, Bridget or myself, and that will help me make some decisions on resourcing and better position the board for your discussion of the budget down the road. I thank you for your attention, and as a conclusion to this session, if you, if you could advance about four or five slides, there you go. I'd like to place that up there just as a reminder of what we've got coming up for you on the 17th and April 7th. On the 17th, employee retention strategies, master plan implementation, industry recruitment and acquisition, along with airport as a catalyst, and we'll continue on with the SWAT presentations. And April 7th, deferred maintenance, facilities, streets, sidewalks, staffing challenges, and hopefully conclude on our SWAT presentations, if that did not occur on the 17th. And we will, if not before, on April 7th, we'll provide you all with, I'd like to provide you all with a fiscal update, what we, what we understand is going on with the revaluation and some other, and our revenue projections should be a little tighter at that point.
Are you through with your part?
Yes, sir.
I got a call from a parent from Ben Heights School in regards to using a piece of equipment that is, the city's, which is a snowmaking machine, and they were told that they would not be able to use it, and I was of the assumption that we always accommodated our schools on a request that they may have in this regard. This was for parents and kids, which was a right big event for that school, and I would surely like to accommodate them with the use of this piece of equipment.
What I would ask, just a little bit of insights on that, city-based policies, we don't, we're not having loading out equipment, and if that's the interest of the board, I would ask if, if y'all, may I put that in form of a motion in a second?
I had a call. I'll make a motion that, based, as far as schools go, when they do want to borrow a piece of equipment such as stage, snowmaking machine, or what have you, that we do accommodate their wishes, and that's my motion.
Of course, now I have a problem with schools' bonds, but I'm interested to find out what the policy is as far as limiting the, who, who, who requests it, who's responsible for that kind of thing, just not limit it right.
I think what, what he just said, we needed to change it. We need a motion and a vote to.
Well, I think what you're asking.
What she thought about is what's the current policy. Apparently, the current policy is no loading of any equipment from the city. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what he said. I'm not sure he said that. I had it made.
When it's Steve Grant, when it's Steve Grant, Phil, like Ben Heights.
In the next week or 10 days. I had the same call, and if I, it's early March, and I said the next week.
If I could, or, and then it started making a motion, but if that motion could just be limited to this one event and this one piece of equipment alone out to that particular parent, until staff can evaluate what types of equipment we might have that schools might want to borrow and come back to us, would be policy that we can adopt that would accommodate all events and all schools and all parents that might.
Mayor, what we would, I would suggest is so that you don't run into any legal issues, is that perhaps it's not restricting to this one because you don't want to turn into an exclusive amendment in any way, but allow it for a short period of time, and that would cover, of course, that would be a lot, much better.
What do we need to do to accommodate this thing? And, and until the staff can come back to us with a policy that we can consider and adopt.
I don't have a problem with that. I have a motion and a second. I do have a second, is that correct?
And Mr. Pizzi, is that intended to be all schools, public and private, or, or just?
That would be in the city.
Within the city. Thank you, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Who made the second? I'm sorry.
I thought you did. Did you not?
I did.
Okay, I have a second here. You must have been discussing, Mark. I have a motion, now I have a motion and a second. Are there any other discussions? Hear none, all in place? Any opposed? Hear none, no?